This is the call to order of the East Aurora Board of Education meeting for September 20th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. At this time, we will be... I'd like a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters related to a particular litigation, matters relating to a particular corporation, matters relating to a particular employee, matters relating to four particular students, and contract negotiations for the EA SCPA. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blowers.
Sorry.
Seconded by Mr. Brunson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Just one thing that the...
Did you say four particular employees?
Yeah.
The second to last one, the four particular employees, we've already settled. We settled it in our executive session last week.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So we will not be... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried six zero. Five zero. Carried five zero. Thank you. I was only a math major for one semester. Okay, welcome, everybody. Thanks for attending. We are coming back from an executive session where we discussed matters relating to particular litigation, matters relating to a particular corporation, matters relating to a particular employee, matters relating to four particular students, and contract negotiations for the EA SCPA. Moving on. Item two.
So, item 18K, added approved agreement between the East Aurora Elementary School District and the EFA, EFA, and Markman Bredy. And under item 18L, add approved agreement between the East Aurora Elementary School District and the EFA.
Thank you. And item five, reports and discussion items. None.
Did the live stream help?
Thank you. Pardon me?
Did the live stream help?
We do not livestream. We post after the act. That has been our policy since COVID. All right, next, we are on to item six, items requiring board action. Letter A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Elizabeth Merzak to probationary 1.0 FTE position with tenure in elementary education as detailed in the agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sorry.
Approved by Mrs. Gannu. Seconded by Mr. Brunson. Is there any discussion? None?
She's here. Oh, she's in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Hi.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? Passed six zero. Welcome aboard. All right. Item B, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Kaylee Jordan to probationary 1.0 FTE position with a tenure of the school social worker as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. O'Weiler. Do you have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Blowers. Any discussion? And I believe we have Ms. Jordan here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And that's approved six zero. Welcome aboard. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Superintendent's comments.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say the school year is off to a good start. I think we came back with a lot of positive energy, and I know that the admin team will have some updates for you in a few minutes. So things are going really well, and I received this, which I wanted to share with the board, from NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association. And so we won this recognition. And I'll show you what it looks like. And actually, we won. We're being recognized, as so is the foundation for Champions of Change, Eastern Educational Foundation, for our Sustainable Agriculture Course. So somehow, NISBA found out that we were offering the new Sustainable Agriculture Course, and they recognized us as Champions of Change. And so, we're very proud of it. And there's another one just like it that says, "East Aurora Elementary School District." And so, it's off to a great start, and I know Mr. Roberts will have an update for you in just a few minutes.
That's great, and it would double as a window shade.
And so, I will let the foundation know, and I'm sure that they'll be very thrilled because they made a very large donation to get the project started, and we are very grateful for them, and it's off to a great start.
Well, the foundation is very excited about that program, and all of the new programs at the high school that have been funded in part by the foundation. We were intending to visit the high school this fall to pop in on those programs and say hi.
Yeah.
Fairness.
Yeah, very nice. So just wanted to share that with the board. Also wanted to say that we've been working on a few safety items that we'll be sharing with our families in the very near future. First, just like to touch base about the district safety plan, which has been posted on the website for, gosh, at least a month or so now. And so, we'll be sending home notices to all of our families with a brochure about what our safety plan's all about, our district safety plan. And what's nice about it, it has a QR code which they can click on, and it'll take them right to this district safety plan. So they don't have to look at the website. It's all right here for them. Additionally, we have been working with the Sandy Hook Promise, and... Yes, so here's the brochure that's going out. This is part of the requirement, so this we call a brochure, but it's not actually a brochure. So that's about informing the public about the district safety plan. The next part is the Sandy Hook Promise, the Say Something. So this is like an anonymous reporting system. So, right now, we have GAGLE, which kind of monitors our system for situations that could possibly appear at this, as they are exchanging information or thoughts or ideas on our computer system. This is a recording system that allows us 24 hours a day, some days a week, 365 days a year. So it's kind of like a crisis center, and so that people can anonymously report situations that they feel are of a crisis nature. And so, we'll be sending this information out to our parents. This will go to all staff members, all parents pre-K through 12, and all of our students in grades five through 12. And so, again, put in a lot of time to make sure that everybody was trained. Next part is going to be training our students so that they're aware of it. And so, again, just another feature of our overall approach to safety. And then the other piece that I'm going to be talking about in October, we talked about this a little bit in the spring, is the Be Smart program. So I'll send this around too. And so, Be Smart program is a framework that is designed to help parents and adults normalize conversations around gun safety and take responsibility for actions that prevent child gun deaths and injuries. We talked about this probably a couple months ago. I think I sent a brochure around, and basically what it's marked stands for is Secure, Model, Ask, Recognize, and Tell. So secure all guns in your home and vehicles, how responsible behavior around guns, ask about the presence of unsecure guns in other homes, recognize the role of guns in suicide, and tell your peers to be smart. And so, what they'll ask us to do too, as part of it, is, it has a resolution, which I'll be sharing some of the details, that we support this program. And so, like I said, we'll be speaking about that in October. Yeah, so again, the district safety piece at building level and at the district level is ongoing. We continue to look at our district plan, also working with one of our members of the team to talk about some additions that will expand what the district plan looks like, some more common issues that we deal with, snow, power outages, those kinds of things. How does that look, and how can we share that information with the public? So again, it's a work in progress, and so, very appreciative for everybody that's been involved. Like I said, it's taken a lot of time and effort, but I think it will certainly be worth it.
If I may, Mr. Ross, just jumping back to the Sandy Hook Promise that you spoke about, when will that be going into, or when will that be available to students and their families?
Yeah, so we're going to be sending the notice. I think it's going to be going out on Monday, and...
The training starts at the beginning of October, so the first week-ish of October, every child five through 12 will get the kind of warning signs to look for, both in person and most importantly digitally. And then, if you do see one of those signals, here's how you can access, there's multiple ways to access the Crisis Center. So, first week of October.
Thank you.
So, yeah, again, it just, I guess, layers, layers in terms of approaching safety and concerns that are in our community. And so, again, that's certainly a work in progress. Takes a lot of time, but again, I'm proud of everyone's efforts. Being a lot of attention, making sure that we're getting things done on time so that we can get it out to our kids and get it started.
Great. Thanks very much. Moving on to item eight, do we have any legislation? None. We will move on to item nine, Board Presidents and Board Members' Comments. I'll get us started. The, coming up on October 16th, is the annual NISBA Business Meeting. And in our weekly emails that we get from the president, they have provided links to their proposed resolution book. I'd ask all of you to take the time to review that. I think it's dozens of pages long, so I'd a couple opportunities to look at it. And I'll be representing the board at that meeting. So I'd ask that you send me your input on those items, and I will take that as I prepare for that meeting. Again, that's, it's, the meeting is on Monday, October 16th, and if you don't, if you're unable to find those emails, let me know, and I'd be happy to share them with you. Additionally to that, last Thursday, I attended the Erie County Association of School Boards' Delegate Assembly Meeting, the first one of this school year. And just a few items that I wanted to note from that. They're doing a few new events. They're trying some new things this year. But in addition to that, the first one is not necessarily new this year, but it's in conjunction with the NISTO convention, which is being held in Buffalo this year. And I think an email just came just today, maybe yesterday, days blur, on the kickoff to the convention event that the Erie County Association of School Boards is holding. They do have a limited capacity to that, so they were encouraging people who were interested to sign up early. The next item is the Legislative Dinner. So they, in the past, done a legislative breakfast in the spring, or in the winter. And last year, they ended up adding a second legislative event, where as in the first one, they expressed their priorities to our legislators. At the end of the legislative session, they're now inviting them to come back and tell us, give us updates on what was talked about. So in doing that, they're switching things up a little bit, and they're taking the fall breakfast and making it a dinner, and they are taking the spring and making it a breakfast. So I would encourage you to look for those. They're also looking at some, a combined program in January between NISBA and ECASB. They're working on trying to identify the topics that they will be discussing, and they also talked about they're going to, with NISBA coming here, they're going to invite the, our Chautauqua County and Niagara County counterparts to participate in that as well, which I thought was a great opportunity for us to, you know, I guess, meet with them. The last thing I'll mention on the new items was the Community Partnership Event. They are bringing in sponsors and other community partners, and it'll be sort of a, you know, it'll be a tabled event where you'll be able to go around and visit with the various partners that ECASB has. And that is coming up, that will be in February, so be on the lookout for that. Last thing is the Round Robin, which is also, which is always a great part of that, where they go around and ask all the school districts to discuss something that's going on within their district. This being the first one of the year, not everyone had a whole lot to talk about. There's obviously some school districts that are working through the process of mascot changes, others that have settled some of their CVA cases. And two of the school districts, Maryvale and Sweet Home, are taking in new students that are part of the Asylum Seekers who have been resettled in Western New York, and so they are working through that process. The last thing I'll mention is Cleve Hill, is as a dedication coming up of their community room to Bob Polino, who served as their Board President for 27 years, which I thought was remarkable and worth noting, and I think that's a...
Well, here's your chance, Joe.
Here it is.
This is the first step in a long...
That's right. That's right. I'm going to start chucking out...
Career. We'll name a room after you.
Excellent. Maybe, yeah. So, yeah, so that is what I have. This is in Proda.
It's the start of the school year, so there's so many fun things. We attended the, some of us attended the Superintendent's Conference right before school started, and that is seriously always excellent. But I have to say, I was kind of talking outside the auditorium before the guest speaker was going, kind of avoiding, like, okay, I got to go sit down now. And then, I heard the voice, and he's, I follow him, like, I seriously follow Jerry Brooks, and he's a principal in the South. And as I was describing him later to my family, and they said, you know, was it inspiring? I said, no. It's, he's not necessarily inspiring, he's invigorating. And there's a difference, it's like, it was, it was invigorating, he was great, and I left definitely invigorated for this whole year. So, thank you very much for that whole organization before school started. And it was just awesome to be able to talk to all the new teachers and just see everyone. Then, the first day of school, I had the privilege of going to the elementary school and watching all of the little ones get off the bus. And, I mean, the pre-K kids are so little, and the kindergarten kids are so little. But what I found amazing was just the, they were excited, but it was like this quiet energy, and they got where they needed to go, and it was just such a calm atmosphere that, just the kids, even those little tiny ones, they just got off and they went where they needed to go. And I walked away from there, I also was like, oh, crying, because I remember my own kids being that age. But I walked away from there totally like, wow, they're going to do great, like, they've got this. So that was, thank you so much for letting me hang out there the first day of school. That was great. Then also, oh, and then, the middle school, I had the privilege of helping with the picture day this week with the middle schoolers. And I have to say, I, you don't always know what to expect with the middle schoolers, but once again, it was also just this calm, just like, let's do it, business, all the kids were well behaved, and they just, it was such a, it was so well done, and so well, just, it was excellent. And I was so impressed with all the kids. They were, I had a great time talking to them. So, I got to see the kids at the middle school, and then, I've been up at the high school for the last couple weeks at the sporting events, and I've just been, just completely floored by the number of kids. And I'd love to find out if we could get that number at some point. I would love to find out the number of kids that are involved, because to my estimation, as I was looking, I, anyone can make a guess, but it was a massive amount of kids that were involved. So that was just also, those, like, three different events that I got to go to at each school just really solidified what we're doing here and what the schools are doing. So it was... And then, work-wise, I will let you speak on that. We went to the Curriculum Committee, and you can tell us about that.
Okay, so I was at the Curriculum Committee last week, and this is in Proda, and we discussed a new program titled Unique Learning Systems. And it's an online program for our self-contained special ed classes. And it's K through 12, so it has the continuity. Eden has been using it for a while, and because of that, there's already plans for us to collaborate with them concerning this new program. It's cross-curricular. It's bundled with five different items. One of the items is a News To You bundle, which kind of is like your news breaking news type thing. And Claire Kavanaugh piloted this summer, and she just raved about it and said how incredible this program was and how it already is impacting students, far beyond what she ever, ever expected them to do. It has teacher interactive training. They looked at other resources as well, but this was the only one that seemed to encompass all the things that they definitely were needing. So that is going to be on our agenda tonight to approve.
Can I ask you a question about the copyright on that program is 1997? It's 26 years old. So I'm just wondering whether, whether they just didn't update the copyright, or whether, you know, how do they keep this thing? If it's an online program, it must have some computer aspects to it, and 26-year-old computer programs are not usually very effective.
So I think that it is multiple, it has definitely been updated because they were talking about even the News To You, it's news that's happening right now. And then, as well, some of the other programs that have been put out now don't have the K through 12 continuity. So that's a...
I'm sure it's a good program, and, you know, I was teaching in 1997. You were doing a lot of good things in those years. So I don't think you throw it away because it's old.
No.
I just want to be sure that it's a live, active program where people are looking at it regularly and bringing it up.
Yeah, it is. Jessica, do you want to say anything to that?
It's aligned to all the New York State standards and the standards that the students are alternately assessed on in New York State. It's all up to date, standards too.
Up to date, it's just when the copyright was created.
Yes.
Thank you.
It meets all the common core standards. It meets everything, so it looked like it was, it saw a little bit of it where we could see it, like a really good...
It looked great. It just had numbers.
Yeah.
You don't doubt it, me.
The other thing I wanted to discuss is the school visitation. Miraculously, everyone agrees to November 1st. Parkdale in the morning at 8:00 a.m., and then the middle school, and I'll figure out the times as it gets closer. November 8th, high school, tentatively. I've heard from Kim, Dan, Paul, and Jessica. Joe, you're a maybe?
I would say I'm unlikely.
And then Maria, I haven't heard from you. Yes. So do we find another date where all of us, or do we take the fix?
Let me take what we have, sorry.
I am perfectly fine. I have an immovable work obligation.
I know Jessica did request that we go back and see the high school in the spring so we can see the new sustainability club and how that is progressing, et cetera. So if long as the high school will have us, we're hoping to be able to go back for a quick visit in the spring. And we'll work around your schedule for that one.
We definitely want to see the chickens while we're...
Well, you might be able to see them in your room.
Come online, they run around on the screen.
And just before we move on, I want, this is in Proda reminding me, I was at the high school on Thursday, so I've now cycled through all the schools in my ears, and each one has its own, I think, level of excitement to be at that, for that day, right? And I really truly appreciated that opportunity to be at the high school, and I know my kids did when I ran up and gave them a hug in front of me. No, I didn't. Didn't know it was... I know better than... Thank you. Mr. Blowers?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Legislative team has a first meeting tomorrow, the committee, I'm on that committee, so I'll be attending that, and some of the information you gave was useful, so I'll mark my calendar for October, other big events, which will be exciting. The Risk Assessment Report will be voted on tonight by the board, accepted, the committee, internal audit committee recommends that you do support that. The report's very comprehensive, it's detail-oriented. There's information that, you know, I think it's informational to the board, there's some things you can learn from that, and certainly, the internal audit is very supportive of our operations, and there was certainly no comments or anything to the negative. We're meeting, we're required to do in certain areas, whether it's food service, technology, and a few others that you commented on, the grants, the grants being handled financially and accounting. Anyway, so I'll support it. We certainly would recommend that you approve that tonight. He's not here to deliver it. If there's any questions you'd like me to take back to him, personally, he's dealing with some things, and so anyway, I hope that you have enough information. The Audit Committee has met previously, which I reported on, and we have another day set up to meet with the auditors to review their findings, and then that'll be presented to the board in October. So, things going on that way. Other than that, that's all I have.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you. Following up on the audit situation, the Audit Committee is scheduled to interview candidates for external auditor based on requests for proposals that has been received. And the interviews are going to take a full day on either October 17th, 20th, or 30th. I cannot do it. So, since Mr. Blowers is the only other board member on the Audit Committee, I wonder if there's another board member who could devote an entire day to interviewing auditors on, and if you can, you don't have to answer right now, but if you can, you could contact Jennifer Happenheimer, and she would, she's just polling people to find out which of those three days works best. So it's going to be one of those three days, the 17th, the 20th, or the 30th. So think about it, if you like. The other thing I have is that, coming up on October 5th, the East Aurora Educational Foundation is having their annual celebration event at the bank on Main Street. There are only a few tickets left, believe it or not. It's a, it's a very limited venue, although it does accommodate 200 people. So we've sold 160 tickets, and I would suggest if you would like to attend the event, and this year honoring Kathy Warda Bender as the recipient of the James Ford Commitment to Education Award, were very well deserved, by the way. And so here's your chance to congratulate Kathy and have a lovely evening at the bank, which is, I've been there, but I've never been there for an event, so I think it's going to be a lovely evening. I have two other things. So we met with the Facilities Committee this past week, and Terry was there, and then it broke away in the afternoon to a meeting relating to the design of the library with the librarian and with some of us who have been in the library. That was an excellent meeting. We got to look at some draft options for floor plans for the renovations, just the first step in coming up with what I am sure will be a delightful plan for the use of this room that will be inspirational for the students and that will work, you know, as a modern library and media center, which I think the architects are very sensitive to this. They brought along several of their designers, someone who does interior design, and they're going to do a great job. So that was last week, although you have on the agenda tonight to talk about other aspects relating to the facilities project, that'll come a little later. And then finally, I'd just like to thank my cohort in our duet of... And then finally, I'd just like to thank my cohort in our duet of bus touring for the new employees. We had 40 or 50 new employees who managed to stick with us for a couple of hours the last week in August to learn a little bit about the history of East Aurora. We've become a kind of a tag team back and forth, telling them about the various, various interesting aspects of people that are no longer living in East Aurora. So we try not to talk about anybody who's still alive. So it was, it was a good event, and I appreciate the marks working with me on it. It's great fun.
And on that note, I'd mention that, you know, the past couple, or a couple of the delegate assembly meetings, I've come back with Kenton does something similar, both for new employees, but also for community members, and they couple it with a community breakfast. So it's a way to get community members into the school, and also to show them that the tour with the community members is more geared towards, less on the history of the area, more on the history of the school district, and clearly, they are much different, much larger school district than we are. But in talking to one of those school board members after the meeting last week, he invited me to come on it, because I said, I would love to figure out how we might look at doing something similar to that in East Aurora, so I'm going to take him up on it and head up there and just hear what, what they touch on and bring it back, so that we can just, maybe, maybe there's a way to modify what you all have set up and, and create something where we can welcome in the community. So-
Good idea.
More, more to come on that, but Mrs. Danny?
I didn't mean for to ask. Did you go last? I'm pretty covered.
Excellent, excellent. All right, well, thank you very much, everyone. We're going to move on to item agenda 10, which is administrator comments. Do we have any administrators to-
No. I can just-
Just to answer Mrs. Improto's question, this is five years ago, but there were two-thirds of our student, or student body participated in at least one sport. And then we had 20% that were two-sport athletes, and 10% of our student body were three-sport athletes. Now, this is five years ago. Numbers may have changed, but that was the last study that we did.
Okay. That's great.
Thank you for that.
All right, so for Parkdale, we've had an amazing first two weeks of school. It's like, the kids have been in the building for months. They're in their routines, they're in their groove, arrival, dismissal, even our little precares, doing their thing throughout the building. We're seeing a lot of community building throughout our classrooms, whether that's circles or Kagan activities, or using the Character Strong curriculum. We're seeing a lot of really great stuff for all of our learners. We've had great feedback from our families about open house and supply drop-off happening before school, and I think that's why it seemed like such a well-oiled machine. A lot of anxiety about finding their classroom on the first day, and who's their teacher. It was kind of all eliminated by meeting them the night before school started. So I think we're going to plan on continuing that next year. We're very excited. Next week, we're doing our first school-wide assembly. We're going to incorporate some student leaders to kick off our Character Strong curriculum with a whole assembly around respect. They're creating a video, they have songs, so we're really excited about that. And lastly, we have Fall Fest coming up on October 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., so we hope to see families and community members there. There's going to be bounc houses, a magician, face painting. I heard hot dogs might be getting grilled this year, so a lot of really great stuff going on at Parkdale.
Thank you very much. Ms. Parker?
Okay, to tag on to that, I forgot to mention, I came to the middle school supply drop-off day, and I think that that is one of the things, too. It definitely, you know, even if you go into eighth grade, it's still a little, it's every year's a little scary, and it's a little, so I think just having that opportunity, and the teachers were here, and people were here, and the kids, every, all the kids were out there, and they're talking, and they're just, you could see them visibly relaxed as they set up their lockers, especially the fifth graders. Wow, that was so important, and the sixth graders. So that was also an awesome opportunity.
I'll give the middle school update, sure. I feel like, broken record, everyone has already pretty much said what I'm going to say, but I was going to start by reminding everyone about October 5th, as Dan did, for the EA Education Foundation event. We're so proud that Kathy Warda Bender is the recipient. She's a middle school psychologist, could not possibly think of a more valuable member of our team. So that was the one plug I wanted to throw out there. And then, like Andrea said, the start to our year has been incredible. The energy is super high, but it's, it's amazing, because even our fifth graders are already falling into place in the cafeteria. We were noticing today how well-behaved they are, and how they're really just fitting in, and we've been preaching that sense of responsibility and freedoms, and they're really stepping up and showing us that they, they're capable of that. The teachers have just incredible energy, they're building, like Andrea said, same at the middle school, restorative practices, there's a lot of community circles, there's Kagan, all kinds of really good things are happening in the classroom. Another thing that was very exciting, last week, we had David McCreary come to visit with the middle school. He met with all of our students, and he is a magician and a comedian that travels the country, and he does his presentation, which is entitled Live More, and he talks to the students just about exactly that, living more, being a good listener, being kind to people, and it was really good message, and we had a lot of fun. He did some magic tricks, you know, some of them were a little goofy, some of them were actually amazing, where everyone was blown away. But it was just a great way to bring the whole school together that first full week of school. Also, one more thing, we have our first-ever family fall social that will be taking place this year. So this is something that we haven't done before at the middle school level, that we've been working with our PTO, to have an event where the middle school families can come together. So we're doing that on October 3rd. We have live music, our very own Jeff Didion will be playing. We have food trucks that will be there, we're going to have yard games, and just different activities for families to come out and enjoy the night. So we will make sure to throw an invitation your way, so if you're available on October 3rd, feel free to come visit. That's all, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Pror.
Listen, there's a lot going on. I'm writing this down on my calendar. So, as Mr. Ross said, just a great honor for our sustainable agriculture program to be recognized in its first week and a half of being an actual course. One of our students, I think, is up there, right, Lily?
It's great.
So, in, to add to what Mr. Ross had said, or said earlier, if you drive by the campus, you'll see a small-scale farm that's fitting in just perfectly on our campus. A beautiful fence has gone up that blends in naturally. We have a shed that's right now housing our, what were baby chicks, and now they're quite fatty, right?
Huge.
Yeah. And possibly by the end of the week, they'll be living in four, we call hoop houses, right, Lily?
Chicken tractors.
Chicken tractors. You want to tell people what that, what that means?
So basically, it's like a movable chicken house, so we can move them to farm and like graze different places and fertilize the soil.
And the students have built these, I think maybe just like one or two steps away from, from being complete. So it's been fun. I find myself going up there every afternoon to check on the progress. In the beginning of October, we'll have students building, correct me if I'm wrong, but high tunnel greenhouse?
Yes, very soon.
Right? It's a large structure, so by the beginning of October, we'll see some incredible progress on the farm. They went today on a field trip to Providence Farm, and also to a, to a local farm, so we'll be giving up the community a little bit. And we had a local college fair yesterday in our library, and one of the college reps from Alfred State just had a local program, heard about the sustainable agricultural program, so he actually went out after the local college fair to talk to the students. So it's amazing, just through conversation, the traction that a program like this is giving. So we'll look forward to, whatever you visit, how many times you visit, getting out there and seeing the progress on the farm.
Mel, if I can just interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
This is your high school PTO page. What you put on there was absolutely incredible. Not only are the kids in the class, but the students, about how you're going to sell the eggs and things like that. That's just not being decided by the teachers. The kids are all included in making the decisions, which I think is absolutely amazing, and you're absolutely trust by everything, this long thing that was put out here.
That's, it's, you have two amazing teachers-
Yes.
-who support students, and, and like 28 students, and couldn't have a better group of 28 students to sort of lay the foundation for this program. They're passionate, they're positive, they're creative, hardworking. It's, it's, it's pretty special. So, in addition, as Andrea and Matt said, it's the start of the year, but in so many ways, wow, we're, we're all in, because it's homecoming next week. So we've got our kickoff assembly on Monday, we have spirit days, we have pool building, we have the annual girls' flag football game, and the parade, and the tailgate, and the game, and the dance. So we are all in, and I also want to just bring to your attention that on October 5th, the same day as the foundation event, that is our day of service to our community. So we are going to have all of our students, 9 through 12, out in the community and surrounding communities, conducting service projects. So it is all amazing, it's not that it's going to be overwhelming, but I'd be happier with, with what's going on at high school.
And I'd just like to comment on the, the sustainable ag course. We were having one of our wellness days, and Eden Hansen, who's one of the teachers that runs the program, was giving a presentation for our staff on local sourcing of products for food and vegetables, and he does all of that. He has a small farm, a small property, and he works with other local farmers to actually kind of get all of his food, his meats, vegetables, produce those kinds of things. And so, you know, we were talking a little bit about it, and I was working with my student advisory group, and we were talking about our own, our own food service program, how can we improve it? That was one of our, our goals for, for the year. And I asked him if he could come and speak to us, and he did. And so he started talking a little bit about regenerative farming, and then, because I saw, I saw a documentary, and he, he understands the concept, and he was, you know, he actually practiced it at his home. And it's really amazing, though, the whole concept of regenerative farming is really incredible, how, how much it preserves the soil and all those great things. Environmentally, it's, it's so much better. And so we started talking about it, and, and what's so incredible is that, you know, we started these ideas, planting the seed, he reached out the bill to talk about what could we do, and then Jeff came on board, who runs our environmental program, and our kids are really, really into it, and you know that. And so it just kind of took on a life of its own, and the two teachers have just done an extraordinary job preparing this, and giving the kids an opportunity to understand farming, and the idea of regenerative farming, what's it all about, but also the idea of business farming, and how do you make a profitable business. Farms, which are really challenging, right? There's so many challenges that they face, but they allow the kids to make the decisions and build the farm, you know, to get their hands dirty, to really experience it. And I would say that it is probably one in a million right now. There's, there's not another school district in our area that's offering this, and it's, it's why it's so important. It's kind of like BDD, it's the, it's to reach out to all kids and to give them opportunities that are not just like strictly academic. Like, we know AP is really important, our kids are, you know, once our kids go off to college, those AP programs are important. And again, the experience of, of high school is to experience it, right? We have a variety, and this course is rare here, right? And they have just done an extraordinary job, and the kids are doing amazing work. It's really incredible, and so grateful. And Bill too, because I got a lot of crazy ideas, I drop them on his lap, and it's just like the course catalog. Our course catalog, I would put that up against any school district in terms of the offerings and opportunities for our kids. Of course, we can't offer all of it, we rotate it, but there's some really great ideas that our teachers are continuously coming up with. It's really, really extraordinary, so it's exciting.
Chris?
If I can just add one more thing, in line with Parkdale and middle school, I just want to let you know that we've brought back our ninth-grade advisory, and it's, it was a program that we had many years ago, but, but had lost a little focus, and we're bringing it back. So what it'll look like, and we start tomorrow, it's, it's a teacher leader, it's two student leaders, and then five freshmen, or excuse me, 10 freshmen, and we're going to meet every other month, and it'll follow the restorative practices model with, with circles, providing students with voice, and, and will also be information sharing. So, so tomorrow, half of it is community building within those, those 10 students, but then the other half is sharing information, important information around homecoming. And so we'll be meeting every, every other month. I meet with the teacher leaders ahead of time, I meet with the student leaders ahead of time, and then we have our meeting with, with the freshmen. So we're, we're excited to bring that back with a new purpose and a new energy, and a lot of that is, is because of our restorative practice training.
Great.
Student leaders, how are they selected? Do they just volunteer to do it, or do you ask specific students, how, how are you doing it?
So during our summer restorative practice training, we took the, we had 13 staff members recommend students 10 through 12, and what I was most impressed with is it's an incredibly diverse group of students. So it is not, yes, the student government president is there, but there are students that have never had any leadership roles on, on our campus.
Underhanded.
So it's, I'm very proud of that group. And so kids that, when we met for the first time, I was isolated.
Great, thank you.
What time is the homecoming parade?
1:30.
On Friday, so 1:30 here on Main Street. Community's invited.
Great, thank you very much. Mrs. Mazzano, how are you?
Well, I haven't done an update in a little bit, so I've probably got a little too much. I need to do better at spreading these out. Just to give you an update, over the summer, my staff worked on refreshing 450 Chromebooks. We are exiting seniors, eighth graders and fourth graders. We're all assigned new ones. This year, the principals were wonderful and allowed us to join them. At Parkdale, we just put them in the new classrooms for the kindergartners, but for fifth grade and ninth, I'm sorry, eighth grade and, fifth grade and ninth grade, we were able to go to supply, supply drop-off and orientation and meet those kids, trade them, get, find out from them if they had any problems, and get to know their parents a little bit. It was a great opportunity to talk about the Chromebook insurance, which is being offered again this year at the same price. We had great success with that last year. We had 211 families for our first year that was, I was very happy with that number. And we at least had 40 devices damaged or malfunctioned to be sent off, repaired by the company, and sent back. We have one student, it went out four times, because it just had a lot of, a lot of incidents occur, and that didn't fall on the family then to be responsible for. That $35 covered as many needs and replacements as possible. So, I'm super happy, we're staying with the same company, St. Ware. The families this year have been notified, they have to, they have a month to purchase it, and, and it will last, again, for this school year for that device, and if the device has to be replaced, we'll have another device.
Hi. If there's a family that is not able to, we have the means so that those families are able to purchase the insurance.
If they want it, yes.
Okay.
They put a, a star on the letter saying, if you are unable to afford it, would like to purchase it, please let us know. I only have one family doing it.
Thank you. And then, do we have any issues in terms of they wouldn't cover something that was damaged? Great, okay, thank you.
And I was thankful for that as well, and the fact that they were able to keep the prices the same made me very happy as well, with inflation and everything. I did expect that to go up. I think they were able to see that we are probably right in line with, you know, industry expectations as, as what would be covered, so.
Okay.
And they do the repairs, they send them right back, we don't pay for shipping or anything. It's, it's very nice, and it takes, you know, the burden of teaching the student to be responsible, but also for the parents to have a backup plan, and the district not having to foot the bill over and over and over for, for incidents, because they happen. We have given our student a bag, though, to keep it in, it should handle a six-foot fall or a crush of a backpack that's in there, in their expectation as the kids continue to use those bags, so hopefully that will help as well. We did server migration plan, we have a number of servers coming end of life, when those support does end on it in October. A number of those have been moved, we have one more to go. It seems, you know, it's the things that people don't see, but the amount of work to get that to occur, not to mention the cost is, is high. So I'm very proud of my staff for, for doing that seamlessly. Our staff in the district probably didn't even know that all of these changes are going on in the- on in the background. Included in that, we've been using E-rate funds on a continuous basis, every five-year cycle, it gets renewed. We just recently, in this past year, replaced 16 managed switches in the closets, and in every single managed switch, a UPS uninterrupted battery supply has been installed, so that if there is a power outage or a blip, battery backup will kick in immediately so that we are not fully down. Those are big improvements, again, on the back end that are, for the grand majority of costs, falling on the federal government under the E-rate program, so. That's all occurred as well. We are, we have a brand-new data coordinator, her name is Amy Christie. She's been absolutely lovely joining our team, and she's very into getting us upgraded with a number of things. So, this year, we are not waiting for parents to apply to be in the parent portal any longer. We have contacted every family and automatically assigned them their accounts. So, it's digital, and this parent portal is going to be used in new and evolving ways. Parents can check the grades on there, what we're moving with Parkdale to get the report cards on there to be more accessible and visible. But we're also moving towards putting all of our forms online. The first one went out today, it's the computer use agreement, I figure if it's going to blow up, it'll be mine, it's not going to blow up. We've tested. But we are also moving to have all of our registration occur online, so the parents can type in their own name and address. Right now, it's all done on paper, and if we can't read their writing or anything's transposed, it's hard to go back and fix that. So, this will be something the parents can take the steps through, get to know our registrar in person for the, the in-person piece, decisions can be done at home at their leisure in order to get their students enrolled in our school. We've also got a number of like change of transportation for, for, what else? Attendance for.
Attendance, that is what we're most excited about. Christie's team has been phenomenal with 703 students at Parkdale. Whenever we have the notes come in, in the morning, it's a little chaotic. So, this is all going to be online now, and so much easier for parents and for our staff to access those notes. I can't tell you how many times we get the call at the end of the day, "The note's still in the backpack, we forgot." So, it's just going to be online now that the teacher, the parents can submit a tardy note, an absentee note, a change for dismissal that day, it's going to be phenomenal. So, we thank you, Christie.
Oh, absolutely. And we're going to do that at the middle school and Parkdale. It will turn on for both schools on October 1st. We're working with the principals to communicate with the families that this change will, it will straddle both the paper and the digital until we get everybody in uncomfortable. So, it's, it's not an immediate look at the switch, but it'll allow the parents who are more digitally or handy to be able to just put it in the app really quickly. So, having the Power School Parent Portal app will have a number of features to give them the opportunity to communicate with us, authorize us, and also access and view their students' information that they need. So, we're excited about that. We also have a couple of new tools that we purchased, Schoolfront and FileBound and the eCollect tool, like I said, helping to get some of our systems to be, the workflow to be easier on our staff, for communication to be more transparent, and maybe speed some things up so that more time is available for the things that need more human interaction. And lastly, we got the okay today to move forward with our backup plan in case our internet goes down or our fiber has cut in the line. We've bid with Bosse's out to have a second internet service provider provided and a second fiber line to make our schools interconnected in like a triangle shape versus right now, we're just in and out. And we're moving forward with First Light to be our second provider. So, I'm very excited about that, it's part of my safety plan, my incident response plan, my disaster recovery plan, all of them, it was a major component to move towards, and now we're able to do so. So, thank you to Joanne for helping us with that and finding the way and working with Bosse's to make it a project, so. They, they did the work, and we're very thrilled. So, it's a whole lot of stuff, I apologize for not bringing it up earlier, it didn't seem like the right times, I guess, but we're doing some really fun things, and my staff, we're full-staffed right now, and we're able to tackle things because there's enough of us to do it, it's been great.
The attendance is going to be a game changer.
Awesome.
An absolute game changer. Just on a total personal side note, my son's in college, and he called me up after the first couple of days and said, "Mom, they don't do Google Classroom here." He was really disappointed because he's learned all, all, everything is done through Google Classroom in the high school, "Don't use that here." I've got to start all over here.
You have a question about the E-Rate program? You still work with Bosse's then, supplying them with information, so we've got a partner there. Is the process any easier, or is it still pretty horrible?
It's horrible.
Is that any easier?
Yeah.
Now, do they cover reoccurring costs, or is it just the new projects, or what?
We, we've not, we don't have any reoccurring costs sitting in E-rate category two right now at all. We've been solely using the funds for switches and infrastructure. We have no subscriptions. It used to be with E-rate that you could put like phone services and that in there, that's no longer allowed. So, we, we don't have anything that would necessarily qualify right now, it's just specifically on a every-five-year rolling cycle to utilize it for category-two type materials. And right now, we've almost, fully utilized almost all of the funds in a very effective way at the moment. The switches, it would be coming out of our pocket otherwise, and they cover it, so.
Benefit, always a pain, no doing.
Oh, the forms are beastly, yep.
Good job with the two of you.
Great, thank you. And do we have any other administrators? Well, thank you all very much for the updates, we appreciate hearing from you and all the amazing work that you've been doing. Thank you very much. With that, we are going to move on to another, which is our community member comments. I'll start by saying that we received our email today with a summary of communications that we have received since our last board meeting. I just wanted to confirm that you all have that and that you've received and, and had a chance to read all those. Thank you very much. Next, we will open the floor for visitor comments. We will keep these, we will ask that you keep these to three minutes, and I'll give you a heads-up when, if you're approaching that, and ask that you just wrap it up at that point. First person I have here is Heather Botzenhardt. Miss Botzenhardt, if you would, join us at the table and...
Can I sit? Do I get to stand?
Please, please sit.
If I don't sit, I'll back down because I don't want to public.
No. Don't do that.
So, you guys know me, bus driver. Have you ever...
I must say, Brian, your kids are the best.
Aw.
They were our, you know, for riding the bus. I never had to write them up, not once. If it's okay with you, I'm just going to read from this because I get nervous and I don't want to lose train of thought. And I would ask for like a minute more maybe because I condensed it as much as I could to get out what I had, and I just, and Linda's also here representing the bus drivers as well, so.
Thank you.
So, I am here representing the school of the families of East Aurora. We would like to address the addition of preschool passengers to our buses. We have less drivers and are adding more students to be transported who are less able to stay safely seated due to their age. It is nearly impossible for the drivers to keep their eyes on the road and drive safely without the help of an aide. They cannot blame the little ones because many of them are just not capable of yet sitting well during transport. They do not understand why they should be, not be walking up the aisle while the bus is in motion to tell the driver what they deem as important in that moment. As we all know, four-year-olds deem really crazy things important in the moment.
And three-year-olds.
And three-year-olds. It has been suggested that we seatbelt the younger students, and I personally, on my Parkdale afternoon run, have approximately 14 UPK, two of which are three-year-olds. On top of that, I've got like 20 kindergartners and then other kids up to fourth grade, so it's like feral cats on the bus. But there are not enough built-in specialized seatbelts for all the preschoolers to do that, first of all. And also, seatbelting them poses a safety risk in the event of a fire due to time constraints in trying to get them unbuckled, it would never happen in time. To highlight safety concerns, here are some article excerpts taken from the Transport Research Interdisciplinary Perspectives, which I had copies for all of you, and I left it at home, so I will give you a copy of this, and I apologize. While I read these, keep in mind that the study does not even address the current addition of UPK students riding the buses. Some of the comments from this article are, "The results of the study suggested that younger students required significantly more time to evacuate, and evacuation through the rear emergency door was impeded due to the elevation drop from the opening to the rear door to the ground." And I can attest, we have to jump, the bus drivers have to do, jump out of the back every year. For a little one to jump out of there, it, it's, it's a long way down, especially on pavement. "If we accept the FAA evacuation time of 90 seconds or less as required time to evacuate a school bus under ideal conditions, only those students in the third grade were capable of achieving this time, and then only when both doors were employed simultaneously. Based on school bus literature and crash observations, it is estimated that school bus interiors can completely burn out in as few as three minutes. Recent evacuation research also suggests that overcrowded emergency exits, running, pushing, and other physical interaction between passengers is typical in evacuations involving children. The addition of a school bus monitor to school bus routes that primarily transport kindergarten and K-2 children would be desirable to facilitate safe and timely evacuations as well as the benefit of having an additional adult present. On bus routes serving younger children, the lack of an additional bus monitor is somewhat disturbing if the need for evacuation arises." And I'll give you this copy, you can, you can, this is just part of this study, so you can look it up from the link, just click this page here. "This study highlights that the younger the passenger is, the more difficult a speedy evacuation becomes. A driver alone, even with an aide, would be challenged to safely evacuate preschoolers in a timely manner, especially when the children start to panic. Also, while each bus driver does address emergency evacuation with the students, it would behoove Parkdale to have the students view a school bus evacuation drill video at the beginning of the school year. If an evacuation is deemed necessary, this may further help them to safely and quickly exit the bus." And as a side note, with the preschoolers, not all the preschoolers are fully potty-trained, and this is adding to our job duties because we're cleaning up urine and feces at the end of our runs. It's no secret that every bus terminal is short-staffed with drivers and, and monitors alike. Several bus drivers left our terminal last year, and more of us are talking about not driving anymore. And the main reason cited in the, is the transportation of the preschoolers. "As the UPK program continues to grow in popularity and more parents choose bus transportation for them, I would expect more drivers to retire." Most of us, I'm 53, I'm like the youngest of the bus drivers, most of them are in their 70s, and it's just, it's a lot to handle with all the little ones on the bus. "Knowing that transporting preschoolers is a safety concern coupled with continued loss of bus drivers due to the added stress, we ask why East Aurora chose to include transportation for the UPK students. Other districts such as Orchard Park, Eurocoine, Williamsville are currently not transporting UPK. Of the few districts that chose to transport, they will not transport three-year-olds at all until they turn four, and they also have aides on the bus to assist with preschoolers." So, in short, I guess what we're considering, asking you to consider is not transporting the preschoolers for next year in the future, and at a bare minimum, for now, it would be requested that aides are supplied, and I know that we don't have them, I know that you don't have them, I don't know what sin air we're going to get them out of, it's crazy. But we're just requesting that we can be supplied with aides for the people that drive the UPK. And I know that right now, we have parents getting on the bus while we're in there to strap their own kids in because we shouldn't be living, leaving our seats. And, you know, it's a quandary, because we shouldn't leave our seats, but the, the parents should also not be on the bus strapping their kids in. And I know you had said something about one of the little ones, like, like they're so small, some of them have to get on their knees to get up on the bus. So, that's also a safety concern, getting on and off with a backpack, and I, I just thought I'd highlight these concerns because it's really, it's like become over and above for us for driving the bus.
Okay, thank you for, for sharing those.
Do you have any questions?
Have you had an opportunity to share your thoughts and your comments there with administration?
At first, you didn't mean?
No, here, here with East Aurora, I don't know if you had reached, if this was your first contact.
No, this was, this was my first, my first contact.
I, I, I might encourage you to, to, to share, share what you had, had written up as long, as well as that study, if you could provide information on that study.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm sure that the administrators would be happy to receive that information.
Yeah.
I do have one question. The other thing that you were hoping is that there would be some sort of, some sort of video planning that the students of all ages would be able to see to understand evacuation? We don't, we don't practice this at all, like we practice fire drills, do we, do we practice bus drill?
Evacuation.
Do we, do we pass, practice?
We, we do, we do the safety drills on the bus, it's been a hot second since we've jumped out the back of the bus. I think that was kind of curtailed because kids were getting hurt. I mean, I've had kids literally jump out the bus like, like super fly, shoot, look at me, I don't know why they do it because they're small and fun, but, yeah, like kids were getting hurt, bus drivers are getting hurt. But that needs to be continued because that's, I think that's important, that the kids are aware of how to do that. But we're not, like, we are not allowed a lot of the time to do that during the school year. We can be on the bus, we tell them what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, but it's not actually doing it. And I think it would be good if the bus drivers could work in tandem with the teachers at Parkdale, like the teachers would stand back and also help and assist so that, you know, it's hard, it's hard as one person to coordinate a good fire drill.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Here's my horrible copy, sorry you forgot the other one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Becky Horning, welcome back.
So, regarding the open meetings law, matters related to the particular litigation of corporations, for the open meetings law, they have to be named specifically when you're in executive session. So, we would appreciate that that openness would be continued on that. I was on, trying to find when the Board of Education meeting was, so I went to the EA or East Aurora Schools site.org, and I clicked on the little magnifying glass, and I typed in "board," and absolutely nothing came up. I typed in "English," and I got a whole slew of things. So, I'm not sure why that doesn't link to, I forget where I ended up finding it, somewhere in the three-lined thing, somewhere's. So, just whoever's updating the site, that would be helpful for people that, you know, want to get involved or want to know what's going on. Also, I was unable to find the minutes since July 1st. From what I know, it's required to be posted online within two weeks of a meeting. Also, the agenda, normally I can click on the agenda, and it was specifically through item 18, updating contracts and stuff like that, and nothing would come up. For books and stuff like that, the, you know, so many books, it's so much, you know, that was all there, but salaries and stuff like that, that should also be public record or, you know, accessible to the public, and it's not. All documents that a board member has been provided for a meeting agenda should be posted online for the public to see as required by the open meetings law. So, on that. On another note, the September 15th special meeting, superintendent's evaluation, just like the assistant superintendents and the business members need to be made public, which aren't on section 18 of the agenda. If there's, if the evaluation results in an amendment to benefits and/or salary, obviously that has to be made, you know, voted on to the public. Totally off this, my son was a major benefactor to a program, I'm not going to say what it is, you can inquire to me. I got a little bit of help from the guidance, you know, they helped me out, but I'd really like to help other parents because he was a major benefactor to this particular program. Again, I don't want to say it in public, but I'd like to volunteer to help other parents because it really helped him with his funding at Alfred. Back, I'm, back to the turf for the capital improvement. The NFL is really, really fighting all of these turfs because there's so many injuries that, that injuries are escalated. You probably saw the knee the other night, and they're saying that that might have happened at effect. But before anything is really done with the turf, I really think that you as a board humility really should really look into whether that's maybe a, an injury factor prior to us having turf, you know what I mean, a risk based on injuries now with the turf, you know, so prior and before. I understand, you know, the drainage and all that stuff, it's nice to have a turf field, but it's a much higher percentage typically of rate of injury of when there's turf as opposed to a grass field. Back to the farmland, the ag course, it's nice to see that that land that was once farmland, we use the farmland again. we use the farmland again. And thank you for your time. That's all I have.
Thank you, appreciate that. With regards to your desire to help out with the program, I'd encourage you to get in touch with the building principal and the expression address directly to them.
Okay.
And hopefully they can contact with us. It's great to hear that your son benefited from it. We'd love to hear that.
Yes. It was unknown, it was told to me, like, the package came in the mail initially, but you get so much mail, you know, oh, what's this, what's that? And a mentor of his said, hey, I bet you he's eligible for the program and it used to be something else than it is now. And, you know, we looked into it, and so we got it in late. We didn't apply until the end of April simply because, you know, but he was able to be accepted, and it was huge stuff.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. We do appreciate them, and we will certainly look into some of the issues that you experienced on the list.
Should I keep checking on those? Like, will those come up on the agendas? Because that's...
They're there.
No, not.
I looked, I looked today.
That was my experience as well.
I apologize. But we've moved over to the board docs system, so they're not in the same location anymore.
Yes, it was under board docs. And there was, most of the agenda items didn't have, like, the contracts and stuff like that, and that's all should be public knowledge.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the minutes, I apologize. The agenda, yes, you're correct in that, I can't attach, but the minutes are posted as well as, there's a link on our website called Board of Education, so I think...
I went to that, maybe, you know, I don't want to take any more of the time, maybe if you and I, yeah, very good.
Thank you very much.
And as we start to go into, you know, discussion of the, of the fields and all of that, I'm sure more will come up on turf and non-turf. But I do want to say that the majority of studies that are out there are not on high school, and that there are injuries on both grass and turf, and they are, interestingly enough, different types of injuries that occur. And one of the variables that has to go into the discussion, and that will, I'm sure, go into the discussion, is that the number of hours that you can use per field, per type of field, turf versus grass, and consequently, that also increases injury when we use the number of hours on grass fields that are not, that they're not made to use. So there's a lot of variables. So as the community, as we're researching what type of turf, the injury depends a lot on the infill, both natural and turf have specific injuries. But as we're all researching that, I would advise everyone to be very careful about where the research is from, and is it from the NFL, because that's completely different? And, or is it from a college, or is it from a high school? And the number of high school research, orthopedic research projects that have been done are very, very limited. But those are the ones that we should be looking at more than the other ones.
If I can, if I may, so I met today with a sports surface company at our facilities association. They also are the company that does turf and actually installed that new turf stadium recently that had the NFL. And I brought up this exact concern to them, and I wanted to get some research on that. He was there mainly to discuss inside services such as basketball courts and multipurpose. But I am setting up a meeting with the, their representative that does fields and turf, and I'm working, I'm going to work with him to give a presentation established for all of you to better understand the different types of turf, the impacts, the different substructures underneath, and things of that manner, and then look into exactly what you had mentioned with regards to NFL usage versus collegiate versus high school, and really work together to find the right materials to ensure that we get our money's worth for the time because of the weather, but most importantly, that we protect our student athletes. There'll be more to come on that.
That's great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brunsdorf. We look forward to hearing more about that as you continue your journey.
Thank you.
Very much. We are moving on to item 12 on the agenda. Okay? We are going to actually take a quick pause, a couple-minute pause, while we take care of business. Thank you. Back underway here, Mr. Bruns, certainly is on his way back. And we will, we can get here and hear all the good stuff. We are on to agenda item 12, reports and discussions, item, reports and discussion items, part two, or the small sequel. First item we have on here is the business office operations. Mrs. George.
Yes, I only have two quick things tonight. I'm very happy to announce that we did receive our draft audit today, so the business office, myself and Mrs. Nagel, are going through that to make sure that we're all in agreement before it's presented to the audit committee. And once we've gone through that process, we will share it with the audit committee in preparation for our meeting. And one other item of business that we received a letter regarding a cyber breach from our banking institution, and our treasurer, right away, she contacted our representatives at the bank, and I'm happy to announce that our accounts were not impacted, and a lot of things that we have in place is helping protect those accounts. And that's all I had today.
Great, thank you very much. Item B, we have the capital facilities project.
I wanted to start off with these, because I just got notice. So the emergency project that we're working on for the middle school with the piping in the basement has been approved, so it's ready to move forward. So they expedited that process, and so we just found out yesterday that it was improved. So now our architects can move forward with querying the documents and preparing for bids and to get it started as quickly as possible. So it does, we're hopeful that we might be able to do it this fall and get it, get it done before the snow and cold weather sets in. So that's really good news. And again, as Mr. Brunson said earlier, we met with our team to talk a little bit in greater detail about the Media Center, which was a really productive meeting. They came up with three really interesting, different drafts of what it could possibly look like. Committee kind of sorted through it a little bit, and we're kind of picking pieces from each one to make it work. So they're going back for a second run. They're going to come back with two, two drawings next time. So I think it was...
I'm well spent.
Our architects have been doing a really nice job in terms of being responsive, keeping things on track and on time. We also met with the family in consumer science, what that's going to look like. Mrs. Parker was there, and again, they showed three different, different options. Looks like we're moving in one direction that was a little bit more definitive, but again, making some adjustments to make sure it works so it's functional, not only for now, but, you know, for the next 10 to 20 years, so that it's, I guess it's responsive to programming changes as those happen along the way as well. In general, things seem to be moving along pretty nicely, that we got a report that the D's turnaround hasn't lengthened at all, so it's still around 12 weeks. So that's another positive thing in terms of preparing for, for the first phase or the second phase, excuse me, that will happen next summer. So that'll all be happening over the next few months. So if we stay on track, we should be in good shape to get things started in the spring of '24.
That's a question. Go ahead, Paul.
So how are they treating, there's only going to be like a phase one on the water problem we're having, that they just approved. Is it going to be a separate project number? And how are they going to treat that?
Yes, it will be a separate project number.
So will we wind up like a phase one or phase two, which is going to be a separate?
Right, just like the doors for the high school gym. That's a separate, it's not phase one or phase two, it's a small, little doors project. Then this will be a middle school drain project.
Whether the approval of the...
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so they, they found some, like, well, one piece of this is, as they were preparing for the final drawings of the project, they went back to the original drawings, they were searching through back the early decades, and in, I think it was 1937, they found a draft that showed that more water was entering this, so most of the roof water was draining into one area, which it's not supposed to do, but that's how it was designed many years ago. So what they did is they adjusted the actual drawings to include a second storage. So as the, as the water is leading the campus, there's like now two storage areas to hold the water, and that's just to, to, to make sure that we are not, like, overloading the system. And so, and what he also told us is that as we look down the road for the next facilities project, we probably want to look at it in a more comprehensive way and say, what are those drainage issues? What are these water problems? And really take a look at it as a significant portion of the next project. But this is a good starting point that can be built upon, so it's a first foundational piece that can be expanded as we move forward.
Talk about that $500,000, is that the number?
Yeah, it looks like it's going to be around, I think, $300,000 now.
$300,000, okay.
And I think it was either the beginning of this week or the end of last week, it's already gone through the expedited process at SED, and we did get approval, so we should be going out to bid soon for that. Now it's just, you know, a matter of that process.
They changed the design a little bit. They put more retention wells along the way, so they're going to have to do a lot of digging in that grass area behind the school. But the long and the short of it is, it should retain the water sufficiently so that the pipe at the very end that goes out to, to the street can handle it, and it looks like a good design. I'd be very surprised if it doesn't come in under budget.
Sorry, Mr.?
So I'd be surprised if it's not under budget, because it's basically just a pipe and a couple of big, a couple of big tanks to hold the water as it goes, as it goes along.
That's pretty simple.
So, you know, but then again, I thought, I thought it would be less than $250,000 to build a half-bath, and apparently, that's what it costs at, at the elementary school to build a bathroom which has just a sink and a toilet, it's $250,000. So, so I'm constantly surprised by what things cost, but I, but I'll be, I'd be willing to wager that it'll come in under $300,000.
Still, I, it's a hell of a cost and stuff.
Well, and interestingly enough, the entire phase one, which is the big, there are two big parts of this, phase one and phase two, and at this point in time, the entire phase one is $600,000 under budget. So, you know, who knows what the bidding will turn out to be like? But it's, I think, pretty good news on the whole, the financial part of this is, is in pretty good shape.
Thank you.
A couple things I'll add. As far as the phase one, they're expecting the review by the end of October, beginning of November, and if that is the case. And as for phase one, they're hoping to start bidding before Christmas, so only to get on the right schedule. One of the things that you're going to be voting on tonight is the approval for the high school exterior drainage scoping, and that Candy Company is going to be doing that. The high school interior drainage scoping. The company that we have been trying to get an estimate from just keeps avoiding us and is not giving us any estimates. So now, kind of have a choice, first of all, the work's approximately going to be under 50 grand. If we go with vendor repair work, that's unaided. If we add this to phase two, then it is going to be aided. So we could take the 50 from the repair reserve. That was just something that was discussed, nothing's decided. They're also voting on tonight the door phases at the high school, and Brian mentioned the middle school drainage. And I think that was all that I mentioned. Oh, no, actually, talking about prices and how expensive things are, to create one bathroom at Parkdale, $250,000, that's just one bathroom.
Well, and that's just a... Well, and that's just a toilet and a sink. I mean, it's not like a bathroom you'd have in your home. It's about the size of this table.
Yeah. And the other thing we're talking about is the playground. And Mrs. Pantoja said that there are some PTO members and there's a whole group at Parkdale that is interested in doing some fundraising towards either the playground or to some of the toys that could be purchased to use outside instead of getting a whole new program. Well, playground right now, because as I said previously, that is extremely expensive. And they're also looking through the foundation to see if there's any funds that they could possibly get a grant from as well.
Playground at Parkdale was designed, most of it, was designed for use in this building when it was the Main Street Elementary School. And then it was moved from back here when the pickleball courts and the grass play area was moved to Parkdale and reinstalled over there in Parkdale. And so it was for older children primarily. So the little ones, the UPK and first graders, struggle with the size of the equipment. And there's some great ideas about having a play area for the little ones out on the grass and to have large toys rather than traditional playground equipment that's embedded in the ground. I did some research on that over the last week, and there are just some wonderful things made by some very fine companies that are soft and big and that kids can play with who are three years old and four years old and five years old and still have a terrific experience on a cool, soft surface like grass. And where they're not embedded in the ground and they can be, we can simply put up a shed and store them away when they're not in use. So I think there's a lot of good ideas. I think the PTO is interested in helping with this, and I would be happy to do some fundraising myself to see it happen.
And concerning our architects, there was a thing left on your table for the convention. They're doing an activity night on Friday night. I haven't even received it. That's it.
All right. We're moving on. We're moving on to item number 13, which is the consensus agenda, which I will point out takes us through items 13 through 17 on our agenda. So I will ask if there are any items on that consensus agenda that any board members would like to review. Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consensus agenda?
Some of.
By Mrs. Daniel, second.
Second.
By Mrs. O'Weiler, do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed 6-0. Thank you very much. And as advertised before, we are now all the way down to item 18, items requiring board action. First one is approve the online curriculum. Do I have a motion to approve the online curriculum titled Unique Learning Systems as outlined in the agenda?
Move.
All over that one. By Mr. Flowers, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Daniel. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I think that there's a misprint in the cost of the curriculum for the unique learning systems.
You're buying five licenses?
We are buying five licenses, yes, but the number in the agenda, I do believe, is incorrect. I need five teacher licenses with the cost of $10,533.79, which does include training. Next year, it will be cheaper.
Well, that's the total cost?
That's the total cost, including six hours for training and then any supplemental training needed. So I think if there's a mis, your numbers incorrect on the agenda.
Okay. Any other?
Sorry, I didn't notice it before.
I'm sorry. 10,000?
$10,525.
10,525?
It is, yeah. It is $10,533.79.
$533.79, you say?
Correct.
So the agenda should be revised to say, number of licenses, five, total cost?
Correct.
10,000, et cetera.
Yes. Okay, so yeah, so that includes the five licenses, two, Parkdale, two middle school, one high school, six hours teacher training, plus all the supplemental training that they need. And then next year, it's less.
So we have five and eight, one, one plus?
This is correct. It says there's five licenses, the cost per license is 1525. So that's the cost per license, so five of them times 1525 would be X. And then the difference between the 10,000, so and so and so is the training cost.
Oh, okay. So the 1525 is correct?
That's the cost for one license. Yes, that's right.
But the total is $10,533.79.
Well, we need to add that to the motion.
So we can leave the five licenses at a cost of $1,525, but we will add to the total cost of $10,533.79.
Yes. And then the subsequent years, so after this year, we would be closer to the original number of seven, 1525, or eight, exactly annually.
Noting that, Mr. Flowers, would you like to amend your motion to approve the revised?
The 79 cents bothers me. Yes, I believe you do.
And Mrs. Daniel, do you still think that? Thank you very much. So noted that it is five licenses at $1,523 for the cost of $10,533.79. Is there any further discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Passed 6-0. Thank you very much for that. We are on to item B, approve textbook replacements. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the following replacement text as described in your agendas, title being Ancient Civilizations. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
By Mrs. O'Weiler. Second by Mrs. Impro.
Just a quick question from the committee. There are 20 copies here, and obviously, there are more than 20 students in sixth grade studying social studies. So how will these books be used?
They're just, yeah, they're classroom copies. Like old, worn-out copies.
Well, so these books are already.
They're adapted, yeah, then they actually go through the textbook committee.
So we already have this Ancient Civilizations title as the, this is the textbook that already exists.
Yep. Same with the next one.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's passed zero. Another item C, approve textbook replacements as well. Superintendent recommends Board of Education approve the following replacement text, the title being Cambridge Latin Course Unit One. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Daniel.
Aye.
And by Mrs. O'Weiler, do we have any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, great program, by the way, Latin.
Opposed? Abstentions? That is passed 6-0. Item 12, approve the agreement between the US, or East Aurora Union Free School District and the EA, the ESPA. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement by and between the East Aurora Union Free School District and the East Aurora Civil Service Personnel Association as detailed in the attachment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Flowers?
Okay.
Second by Mrs. O'Weiler, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed 6-0. Item E, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the contract between the company and the East Aurora Union Free School District for pipe inspection services. The high school performs for the 2022 improvement projects as detailed in the attachment. Do I have a motion to approve? Mrs. O'Weiler, second?
Second.
Flowers? And discussion?
Have these been reviewed by your attorney?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? Passed 6-0. Item F, Superintendent recommends that Board of Education accept 2022/2023 Internal Audit and Corrective Action Plan as presented by the internal auditors to the Audit Committee with details as detailed. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Flowers, seconded by Mr. Brunson. Is there a discussion?
Just briefly, thanks to Tom Finiziani for his work. He's our internal auditor. It's not a big firm. It's an individual contract with Tom, and he's been with us for a number of years now, and we appreciate his work. We also note that this particular risk assessment was probably the one that had the fewest comments regarding the need for change. And so the corrective action plan is very simple because there really were hardly any corrective actions needed. So that's all good news. It just shows that previous items that had been identified by the internal auditor are now, have been resolved. So we appreciate that. This whole position, by the way, of internal auditor was created at the same time as the requirement that school board members take six hours of training in school management and six hours of training in monitoring and supervising the program. And it all came about as a result of some troubles that were down in Long Island. So we have auditors coming out of the woodwork from every direction.
If my memory serves, there's a movie that we watch about that specific situation. I forget the.
Oh, yeah.
Long Island situation.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was so, well, when I took that six-hour training program, they spent the whole six hours talking about this bizarre situation in Long Island. We don't have to worry about it.
New York State one that they provide is great. And then they have subsequent ones, like besides the one we have to take. There are other ones, like if you're super interested, there are other ones that the New York State School Board provides for us that I think are pretty informative. I definitely learned a lot.
So you've taken those two courses more recently than any of them?
Yeah.
Sure, that's great.
Great. Thank you very much. So we have a motion, we have a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And that is 6-0. On to item G, the superintendent recommends that Board of Education approve the contract between Builders Hardware and Specialty Company and the East Aurora Union Free School District for work being performed for the 2022 federal improvement project, specifically the high school doors as detailed in the attachment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mrs. O'Weiler, second?
Aye.
Is there a discussion?
An approved by your attorney.
Oh, okay. And it appears that it is going to happen this year. So that's pretty exciting.
How many bidders were?
Yes, I think.
Two quotes from the same company. It was, it went out to, this is the doors?
Yes.
Two quotes and different products to do it with from the same company, but it was sent out to multiple, multiple, and we only got from the one company.
It was two options.
Small projects like this are attractive to bidders. We're fortunate to have a bidder who apparently the young and right have worked with before or perhaps Buffalo Construction. They, so they're recommending this, and since they are, I would suggest.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? That's passed 6-0. On to item H, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the amendment to contract of employment for the Assistant Superintendent School of Martin Mambredi effective July 1st as detailed in your attachments. Do I have a, Mr. Brunson, motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That is passed 6-0. Item I, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the amendment to the contract of employment for the school business administrator, Julian George, effective July 1st as detailed in the attachment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Brunson?
Second.
Mrs. O'Weiler, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed 6-0. Item J, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Sue Kramer as Executive Secretary of Schools, Public Relations Representative, effective July 1st as detailed in your attachment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mrs. O'Weiler?
Second.
Mr. Brunson? Seconds. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And that is passed 6-0. Item K, Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement by and between the East Aurora Union Free School District and the East Aurora Faculty Association, East Aurora Administrator Association, and Mark Mambredi as detailed in the attachment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mrs. Improta, second? Is there any discussion?
Just a quick question. Mr. Russ, is this a new program or is this something we've done every summer? I just don't recall this particular action item.
We brought it back in house, BOSI's.
Yeah, so, you know, we, okay, so we've done it a couple of different ways. So BOSI's was not doing it this year, so we took it over. So we brought it back. We had, I think we had a discussion, and that was months ago, about like how it's changing. Yeah, so, yeah, so it's, so we had our own people kind of running it.
So this is a former BOSI's program that used to be at Parkdale every summer?
Nope, that's still there.
Yeah, that's still.
A program that we've had.
A program that we've had in certain years, BOSI's has also done it. They won't be able to staff it this year.
So we're bringing it back, we brought it back in-house.
Well, BOSI's still also ran a summer school.
And then they run another separate program.
For a different group of students, I assume.
Yeah, there's multiple. So they couldn't staff this program, so we had to bring it back in-house, but they still had another program running at Parkdale.
I see, so for different needs that they addressed.
Yes.
About how many students were addressed by this particular program?
I was going to say about 30, yeah.
Yeah, about 30.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? And that is past 6-0. Item L, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement by and between the East Aurora Union Free School District and the East Aurora Faculty Association as detailed in the attachment. Do I have a motion to approve? This is Mrs. Oweiler, second? Second by Mrs. Improta, any?
Any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And that is past 6-0. We are on to item 19, apologize, new business. Is there any new business that any of the board members have to bring? Hearing none, we will move on to item 20, items of information. You will see on here the upcoming meeting dates for the Board of Education as well as upcoming meeting workshops and conferences listed out for Erie County Association of School Boards and MISBA. I will piggyback on what Mrs. Improta was saying with regards to the training that were required. At the Delved Assembly Meeting, it was brought up that through our membership with Erie County Association of School Boards, we can take their training multiple times if we'd like. If anybody wanted to go back and retake that six hours, you can sign up and do that at no cost to the school district. So just throwing that out there if you have any free time. On to item 11, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Oweiler, second? Mrs. Daniel, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? And that is approved 6-0, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.